It doesn't cost me unless they got here.
You have Brian?
Sorry?
No.
Welcome, everyone. Let's call this meeting to order. Everyone will stand and join me in the pledge. Okay, council has their agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda?
I make a motion that we move. Item C of the consent agenda to our regular, add it to our regular agenda.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Hi. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the change to the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with said changes.
Your second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Do we have any announcements this evening?
No announcements.
Okay, and there was no public comment sign up? Okay, so to the consent agenda, that leaves two items. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion and adopt the consent agenda. I'll second.
All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. We're moving along. Alright, regular agenda, item A, the Powell Bill policy.
I'm sorry, who seconded the consent agenda? Was that you? Brian Kaski made the motion. Okay.
Good. Okay.
I'm sorry, yes.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to your first town council meeting in quite some time. We certainly appreciated not having meetings in the month of July. I hope you all appreciate it as well. So we're back at it tonight. We've got a couple of things on the agenda that need some action. Starting off with the Powell Bill policy, earlier this year, beginning at the visioning session in January, we talked about the town entering the Powell Bill program, which is a program run by the North Carolina Department of Transportation that was started back in the 50s with the intention of providing funding to local municipalities to aid in their maintenance and improvements of public roads, not state maintained roads, but their own municipal roads. Up until this point, the town has been maintaining Town Center Drive as it normally was and the other piece of the park that we, that the town owns. This year, we entered the Powell Bill program as the 509th community to be in the program. We're the first ones to join in about six years. There are very specific reporting requirements for the Powell Bill program each year. Being this is our first year in the program, we only had to submit two of those things, which was called a certified statement and a map that was signed and sealed by an engineer. There are two other reports that are, that are due each year typically in July and December, excuse me, August and December. But because we weren't the program last year, we have nothing to report, so there's nothing to include. Before these funds are received, it was discussed earlier this year about having a policy in place to guide the town on making financial decisions about how this money should be utilized. And so that's what you have in front of you. The first thing following your staff report is what the DOT provides each year. It's called Powell Bill Exponential Guidance. This is updated back in 2015. And this is the most recent version of it. So I included that for reference. The policy itself is attachment B. And it basically is a copy and paste of everything on that first attachment. So the purpose is, is what we drafted, Powell Bill program requirements come straight from the policy. The background is from the program itself. So you really get into the meat of the policy, if you will, on page five, letter G, where we start talking about town priorities. Then the remainder of the document is basically supporting information about why it makes sense for the town to invest in transportation infrastructure, bikeway screenways, and that sort of thing. And then the very last item, letter H, is petition for road dedication. If the town is ever in a position to want to entertain something like that, there's some basic outlines to follow. And this would, this is just the outline. There would be certainly a more robust petition and application process and procedure laid out in the town code somewhere. So that's what we have in front of you this evening. Open to questions about it. Certainly no action is required at this point. The funds are not expected to come in until October 1st of this year. They come in two halves. So the first half would be October 1st, secondly, January 1st, 2022. I think it would be wise to have this wrapped up before then, but this is a local decision. We're not required to do this by the state.
So, just a, just, just, just a question. So with the Powell Bill funds, all that we're talking about is the roads within the, the park.
That's all that we are reporting to the state as far as Powell Bill road mileage. The town does get.
So if someone, so if someone comes to us down the road and wants their road added, is that it would take an act of this council to approve that?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
And Daniel, these, um, these Powell Bill funds could be used to pay for, for instance, construction in the Millsour Valley Trail, that sort of thing? Okay, outstanding.
And, and matches for, for projects, like for example, the Millsour Valley Trail, there's a local match requirement for that. These funds could be used to, to pay for that. That's federal money, not state money.
Very good.
And this goes along with Brian's question. If we, if we contribute to that, does that, long-term, have any effect on maintenance? Does that tie, like if we spend part of our Powell Bill money on a project or with a road, maybe on the road repair, does that tie us to that maintenance since we funded that project?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Is that?
That's not, well, like the guardrail are with the trail. That's what I'm curious. If we, if we fund a trail with this, you know, are we responsible for that portion?
I see.
I'm just curious if there's anything that ties it back in.
Right. So there's a couple of different scenarios. Let's take the guardrail, for example. That was funded through local funding, not Powell Bill funding. If that project were to happen, say in November, the town could work with the Department of Transportation to iron out municipal agreement, which is what we signed for the guardrail project. And, and in that case, the municipal agreement would specify who's responsible for maintenance. And the same thing would be true for a bike, or excuse me, a greenway along the road. If it's being built within the DOT's right-of-way, the town can use Powell Bill funding to help pay for it. And the municipal agreement would actually specify who's responsible for that, that maintenance. But there's no obligation that you use the money for maintenance of something built with Powell Bill funding. So you. Right. Not by default. You certainly could if you wanted to.
And early on, Daniel was talked about the money could occur for 10 years, but that's not the case. That's 10 funding cycles, which would be five years.
That's right.
And after that, if the money's not spent, it only affects our, the funding that we would get from the state afterwards. So it could, it can only build up for five year, five, 10 buildings or funding cycles, right?
That's right. It can, it can accrue for 10 funding cycles. And if we haven't spent that money after that 10th cycle, then we would not receive the Powell Bill funds the next year. But if we were accumulated, accumulated for five years and then the town spent $100,000 on a bike path or something like that in our annual allotment is more than 100,000, we would only get the 100,000, which would equal five funding cycles, or five years. That makes sense.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Daniel, this, um, if we enter into the Powell Bill program, this also adds a fifth service.
That's correct.
That we've entered into, correct? Alright, so that is very interesting to me because it allows us to perhaps renegotiate one or more of the services that we currently are overpaying for. So I, I think it gives us a tremendous amount of leverage. I'm all for this program and we've, we've committed to doing it. I don't know if you need some action from us.
It's up to you. It's, it's a new policy, so it would need to be adopted by a motion of majority. If you're ready to do that tonight, that's great. If you want to think about it, that's fine too.
So anybody have reservations?
I assume everybody's read, all the council members read this and I'm fairly comfortable with it, but I've, I would really, I don't want to see the town get into street ownership of streets. And so in, in the all's for opinion, is the language in here strong enough to keep us from getting into the street business?
I think it probably wouldn't be a bad idea if we put, just a clarification on the petition for road. I think it was the last one.
You don't.
Maybe we just put an item in there that says that it has to be approved by town council. And then that way.
So under two, the town reserves the right by council vote, just like adding that?
Yeah.
Just so no one sees it as like a staff decision.
So do you want to modify number two under that?
Is that the simplest?
The two, the town reserves the right to refuse acceptance of maintenance of street roads within its judgment. And again, I don't know, do you want to, do you want to add number three, saying that all decisions must be made by council or something to that effect?
I would like, I would like to see it specifically specified that it's a council decision.
Okay.
On the advice of our attorney.
Okay. I'm actually going to make that number one. So that's the first thing people see when they're reading this. And then I'll just push everything else down to let number two and three.
And after that, I'm, I'm comfortable.
I'd like to see the wording before we vote on it. Is it, any sent attorney, attorney to the back to us?
I'm comfortable with it as it is.
I mean, Daniel, we're, we're already enrolled in the program, right?
Yes.
So it's not going to hurt to, if, if a council member wants the attorney to look at, then it's not going to hurt anything, right?
No, this is completely a delay decision.
No delay or anything like that.
Alright, any more discussion on this? Alright, moving on.
So let me, let me, what, what's the action here? We're going to get.
I think we're waiting to get the final draft and let Sharon.
Okay.
Look over the.
And then we'll bring it back to you when Sharon has a chance to review it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just set a public hearing date for the resoning request for 598 miles view drive for September 9th.
Good evening, council. So staffs requesting a public hearing date for September 9th for resuming requests are 2103. We received the application on June 7th for 598 miles via drive to resume from light industrial to MR30 residential. The planning board voted to recommend denial on July 6th. Next up's a public hearing on September 9th gives us ample opportunity for public notice.
What was their reason for denial? Can we ask that now?
I don't have their statement of consistency in front of me, but inconsistencies with the land use plan regarding reserving land for light industrial uses.
I'll be out of town that week, but I'll, I'll zoom in or something in spirit or technology one.
Daniel, is that?
Yes.
I've had some complaints from the planning board, excuse me, on staff recommendations.
Okay.
And it seems like from what I've heard is that staff recommends approval of a particular item. Is that the staff shouldn't take no position, should they?
No, that's, that's, that's the best role and responsibility of staff.
I'm sorry, wait.
But yes, that's the role and responsibility of staff is to interpret the plans and then make a decision, recommendation accordingly. Now, we don't get into quasi-trudicial cases because that's, that's truly just the facts of the case presented that evening. But anything else that's policy-related legislative, like a rezoning or a text amendment, for example, that's part of staff's responsibilities to make that professional recommendation.
Well, is that, is it, I'm not picking on Michael, but is that why don't we change the wording? Is that, it says staff recommends. Why don't we change that to staff suggest that council set a public hearing? We, now, going back to the planning board, is that if staff recommends approval, then that shows is that, that seems a little odd to me. Is that staff should not be one way or the other. Staff should say they have met all the requirements and we take no position. That make sense?
It does.
Well, is it, can we make, can we make that change?
I don't feel comfortable making that change. I mean, that, that is the role.
I don't feel comfortable with staff making a favorable recommendation on anything.
Okay. That, that is, that is part of our responsibility as.
No, is that your responsibility is to make sure all the paperwork is done, all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed, correct? Okay, it is not staff's responsibility to say, oh, we don't like this. We're going to make an unfavorable recommendation. Or we make a favorable recommendation. Is that staff is supposed to remain neutral. I would like the staff to remain neutral. Okay? Say yes.
I understand.
Okay. So I'd like to change this wording. Staff suggest that we set a public hearing on both of these items. No?
You can change it to whatever you want. I mean, the request isn't changing. It's, it, yeah, i- if you want to change the wording in the staff report, I admit it doesn't change. This is a request for a public hearing. It's not saying we have to have a public hearing on the 9th. It's just according to the state requirements for public notice. That's the next earliest hearing date that we could get for these applicants. And that's what we're trying to do, is just get them through the process. It's the next logical time for that to happen.
Personally, I don't see the point in changing the language. I mean, it has, as Shay just mentioned, it has the same meaning. I mean, it might be a little gentler or what have you, but.
Suggests as more normal according to Western.
If we're looking at, at recommending a public hearing date, and that's the appropriate date, I, I appreciate having that information. That's, that's really all I'm going to say about it.
Alright, I'm going to make the motion to set the public hearing date for September 9th for the rezoning, rezoning request for 598 miles view drive.
I will second.
All those in favor of setting the public hearing date? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, so next is setting the public hearing date for the rezoning for the text amendment 20-01 for Bold Rock Sidery.
Same, same information. This is a text amendment application, similar process to a rezoning. They've been to the planning board for a recommendation. And we are requesting a public hearing date for September 9th for them to continue the process.
I'll make a motion, we set a public hearing date for September to that. Second.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, to the financial dashboard as of end of the fiscal year.
Excuse me. Okay, because we didn't meet in July, these numbers are a little bit old, but it is your fiscal year-end dashboard. We closed the year very well. Just, if, if you're looking at revenues, we were at 115% of revenues. And that's with your amended budget. If we've stated the original budget, it would have been higher. And your expenditures are only at 85.3% of your budget. The main area of revenue increase was in sales tax revenues and motor vehicle tax revenues. Also, a transfer was completed into the general fund that drove your revenues up for $10,179 that came from your capital project fund. And FYI, on your revenue side, all your cash, CARES Act funds have been spent and all the appropriate reporting completed. That's all finished out. Expenditures. Part of the reason we're 85% of that is because the Riverbank Restoration Project is really just beginning. So we, we had that budgeted and we didn't spend, we spent part of it. I think Daniel's going to, might explain more of that later. And the engineering for the Millsour Valley Trail, the bidding hadn't been done yet. The branding chart project was put on hold, as were the town hall renovations in the multi-use trail and the field of benefit farm property. So most of your capital projects did not happen. So even though our revenue, our revenues are up, expenditures are down. With doing those capital projects, we might have come in closer to budget. Investment rates continue to be extremely, extremely low. Though I'm trying to keep things diversified anyway, I still have some CDs. The best one's earning me a quarter percent, but that's about to mature. So that's not going to happen again, I'm sure. The commitments to the fund balance are, are down to basically your reserves now, your reserve, your cash flow, your building maintenance. You're committed, I'm sorry, you're assigned fund balance for law enforcement services and your capital reserve for your parks. And this was as of June 30. And then your total uncommitted fund balance was 3 million. I'm going to leave it at 3 million and not give you the dollars because we were audited last week, well, last month also. Those numbers we presented to you, October, November. So some of these numbers may change just a little bit. But, um, actually, that will probably go up as the auditors move some of your leftover revenues into your fund balance. Any questions?
Thank you, Sue. Alright, now, item E is the text amendment discussion. And Councilman Austin wanted to add that.
So Daniel, just for background, give us a give us the lowdown on how, how that, how a text amendment change comes about with a property owner.
Sure. Right now, the town allows the, anyone from the public, as well as planning board, council, the town manager to initiate a text. If it comes from the general public, there is an application fee of $500. And they submit the application and they submit the information they want to include in the new text. So basically example language. And then once that is processed, we add it to the docket for the planning board. It's usually within 30 days of receipt of the application. And then it goes through the process. Its first step is, is the planning board meeting where the board offers a recommendation and a statement of consistency. And then it comes to the town council to set a public hearing. And then that hearing is held and council conducts that, makes a decision accordingly based on, on his feelings at the time. And so that is a possibility, excuse me, that, that is perfectly acceptable to do that. Some jurisdictions do not allow the public to make requests for changes through, through an application process. I've seen where they will come to the council and say, I'm interested in doing whatever. And, and the council says, yeah, we, we're open to that idea. And then that kind of starts the ball. So that's, that's where we are with text amendments in general. Is there more detail you want me to?
And whenever you're saying public, you mean a property owner?
Yes, I mean, a property owner. And, or designated agent.
Right. And that, if a text amendment is successful and it passes council with a council approval, it will be in that zoning district, the whole townwide, right?
Right.
So it's changing what the zoning says in the whole townwide district, right?
That's right. Yeah, if, if it's, if it's a change to an allowable use, for example. In general residential, if you wanted to allow, I don't know, I'm not going to use as an example, but if someone wanted to add a use in the residential district and it was approved, it would affect all properties that were zoned MR30, not just the one that made the application.
So
so if somebody comes in and submits a text amendment change, is that a lot of time and effort on Michael's part and your part, uh, to see it through to the end, to, to the September night accord on this one for Bull Rock? How much time and effort do you have in that?
It really depends on the complexity of the amendment. I'll, I'll use Boulder Rock or Artisanal Brewing Ventures for example, since that's fresh on the mind. Um, between meeting with the applicant beforehand, which is a requirement, pre-application meeting. Um, that's probably an hour, hour and a half worth of work, phone calls back and forth before the application comes in. And then once the application comes in, you know, for, you know, this is back in June, so I'm trying to remember how much time I spent, but it, between reviewing the application, preparing the staff reports and the attachment and then presenting it to the planning board, probably eight hours worth of work for one person.
And then too, we have to advertise for the, for the, uh,
Yes.
public hearing.
That's right.
Attorney, if we talk, if we talk the attorney.
Right.
And at the end of the day, it always comes back to where, whether we approve it at council level, right? So my thinking is, would it not be more efficient for the property owner to come and give plead your case to council? And if we see, we being this council sees that it has merit or that it might be something that we'll be interested in and give the go-ahead from there instead of filing the, uh, application straight with you to start with, a more efficient and it does. And it just, if we're not going, if it's an amendment, a text amendment that we're not going to look at or approve anyway, wouldn't it be better to stop it right up front instead of, uh, instead of us never taking it up? Instead of you spending eight hours in this advertising for a, a public hearing? At the end of the day, it's going to be a lot more efficient, isn't it?
To what you said, some municipalities do, the public brings it, just to see if we're interested in kicking that around.
Yeah, so I think if you were to look at a change in the ordinance, for example, you might, you might change it to read that under the text amendment procedure, option A could be the public is invited to attend a council meeting and petition counsel for an amendment, something to that effect. And then it would be recommended for review of, by the planning board.
And I don't, and I don't want it to look like I'm trying to cut a property owner out of a voice because that's, that's not anything like what I'm, I'm wanting. I'm just wanting us to streamline the process a little bit more. Be a lot more efficient instead of if there's, uh, if there's somebody puts forth the text amendment and we go through all the all the hassle and effort and it's a oh-five vote. I mean, it wasn't ever going to go anywhere anyway. Then we wasted a lot of time and effort and money.
What's, what was the application fee?
Five hundred dollars.
And that's another point. If a homeowner comes in and pays five hundred dollars and submits the application fee and then we vote it down, basically they've spent five hundred dollars for nothing. So they can come here for free. Tell us what they want. And yeah, I think that also ties into the, where we started talking about the conditional zoning district or that that's a better solution. If somebody has a one, one-off type solution versus saying, hey, let's make a text amendment across the whole board that affects all zoning districts. So.
So I mean, I just wanted to bring that up to, to us here as council and, and kick it around and talk about it a little bit, but, uh, I, I'd like to streamline that process a little bit and make it a lot more efficient for everybody involved.
So what does staff feel? So five hundred, five hundred dollars worth of time or?
Well, the, the fees that are set are intended to recoup the cost of administering an ordinance. So if you look at five hundred dollars for an application fee, that in, in theory pays for staff time to review the work, the public hearing notices, um, the sending out public letters that we, we send to neighbors, all the postage associated with that. And then, um, of course, it goes to the planning boards, there's time associated with that. And then preparing the public hearing notice. Um, and then I don't know what public hearings cost, like ninety bucks, maybe they're advertised each time. Um, so there's that. And then of course there's town council meeting, which can, you know, can take a couple hours at a time. Because, yeah, planning board as well. Yeah. And, and that can take one meeting or can take two meetings. You know, it's, it's really dependent upon the complexity of the, of the application. I'll say five hundred dollars is a pretty routine fee that a lot of the people in their, in the area charge for text amendment. Um, I think if you were to sit down and actually look at staff time and going into a text amendment, again, it really varies based on the complexity of their amendment. But something like what Artisanal Brewing Ventures has submitted, that's pretty involved. You know, so that's going to take us, the town's going to spend more than five hundred dollars taking that through the process. So we just need direction from the board. If, if it's, it's a relatively simple amendment for us to make, we just need council to give us that direction and we'll take it to the planning board as early as next week if the board wants us to.
Daniel, in some ways I could see that five hundred dollar fee as being a useful deterrent to keep people from lining up out the door, you know, wanting to come in and, and ask for their property to be rezoned on this or that or, um. So while I do understand Councilman Austin's point, um, I, I'm very interested in yours and Michael's, um, opinions on this because I I understand wanting to streamline the process and whatnot, but I also understand that our time is valuable and, and I'm not sure that having land, landowners lined up, you know, wanting to shortcut the processes.
Could we change the steps up a little bit? And once you get the application, they pay the fee, he goes here first? To see if it's something entertaining. I mean, is there a reason that we have to do it the way that we do it?
No.
And if we kicked it back from the start, then you all wouldn't have to put time into, other than maybe the pre-meeting. Then you wouldn't have to do the advertising and go to planning board if it's never going to go past here.
So what, what, just for more information, the way that this typically works is Mike or I, uh, will get a phone call from, you know, Joe Citizen who wants to do something on their property that they're not allowed to do. And we'll say, well, maybe you can apply for a variance, but you have to prove these hardships. Um, maybe you can rezone your property and then text amendment is always an option. And we'll usually talk through the, the process for that, the costs associated with it, which is the application fee, the time constraint. Um, and oftentimes that's where the conversation ends when they find out that they have to pay five hundred dollars. It's going to take three to five months, you know, routinely to get a, get a application all the way through the process. Um, most of the time when, when we, at least the last several years, and I've spoken to folks, three months is too long to wait for, for their project. They're ready to go. And if they, the ordinance doesn't work for them, they have to go somewhere else.
I think my real problem with it is it affects every property in the town. That's where I've got real problems with this. If, I mean, if there's a way around that, then, then I don't mind, you know, backing off, changing how it, how it works, but I don't, I don't see how that, how that's possible, is it? Other than like Councilman Campbell said, maybe start a, uh, conditional use permit for some of this stuff instead of.
So I'll just throw this out there as food for thought. The, you have a similar process in your special use permit for multifamily housing. The first step is with planning board, but the, the first step I meant is actually it's, it's a pre-application meeting with the planning board. And that's for the board to offer up initial feedback, much like what you're describing tonight for text amendments. So it's not unprecedented that the town would do something like that. And it, it would, I think it would save time in the long run because people will come, um, despite what Mike and I might advise them about likelihood of something happening or whether or not it's a good fit or what have you. They're probably still going to want to come to council and to make the request. And if, if council knows at that point that it's not even something they're willing to consider, it's going to save a lot of time and money. From a, from an administrative point of view, it's not any more burdensome than anything else that we do to just have them, invite them to come here.
So I had a question for the other council members. I know they gave us the conditional use or the conditional zoning district information. Is there, man, is everybody like, okay with seeing more of that or we? I mean, if we are, then could it be possible that you guys draft something up that would look like an ordinance that would allow for conditional zoning for Mills River? And then if we adopt that, then that may be a, a solution to Randy's problem because that would make that a solution. And then we wouldn't necessarily have to address the text amendment because that would still be an option to somebody, but.
That's a good point. So just for, uh, information for those listening, we provided you all some information back in June, I think about conditional rezoning. And the way that that would work is it's a, is, it is a rezoning as far as process goes, just like any other rezoning is concerned. What's different about it though is you can, the town and the developer builder can decide upon mutual conditions that they both agree to. And which could, could avoid exactly what Councilman Austin was talking about where if someone has fifteen acres and they want to be able to do something, um, council could authorize that to happen, but just on that site. Uh, it wouldn't affect the entirety of town. Conditional rezoning on its, on its own is a very good tool. Um, which I think would make sense for Mills River, the text amendment process. Um, some of it would be, I think, probably handled through the conditional rezoning process if people really wanted to go down that road.
And there, there's still a fee involved?
I would suspect that there would be for a conditional rezoning.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because you still have to go through them.
We still have to go through all the same steps.
Yeah, I would be interested in pursuing that more.
Question.
Yes.
So the council can initiate a rezoning. Can the council initiate a conditional use permit? And also is that if we leave the text amendment thing in place, can the council initiate that? Like Randy said, so I'm going to pick on Jim Foster since he's sitting here. So if he wants a text amendment, instead of going through the five hundred dollar thing, can the council initiate that?
Yes. Yes, the council can initiate text amendments. I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but from what I can recall, that may be initiated by a council, the planning board, town manager and a, a property owner, I think is what it says, something to that effect. Uh, so the council can authorize or initiate a rezoning. They can initiate text amendments. They can't initiate conditional use permits. Um, that's something the applicant would have to do. And it couldn't initiate a conditional rezoning on its own either. That would have, that would have to come from an application. Because the, the town, the developer agree mutually on what those conditions are for that site.
So we're in agreement. We want more information on the conditional zoning. And you're comfortable leaving the text amendment, Randy? If we get something out someplace. So can you get us a draft of?
Yes, we can certainly do that. I, I, I do think to Councilman Austin's point, we should remove that option for a public system of text amendment, even if we do conditional rezoning, because there are still other things that people might want to change your ordinance for, not just rezoning purposes. So I, I think it would be, it would be best to address that at the same time I'm doing this. So if that works for council, that's the approach that we'll take.
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, so next to item F, we've moved from the consent agenda, the resolution twenty twenty-one dash three eight, Henderson County Animal Control Ordinance Adoption.
Yes, give me one second. So back in two thousand and eleven, I believe it was, the council, do you have it handy? Thank you. The council adopted resolution. The number, I'm sorry. Uh, an identical resolution to this back in two thousand and eleven. With the intention that the county will be authorized to enforce its, its noise ordinance as well as the animal control ordinance within Henderson County, within Mills River, I'm sorry. Um, for one reason or another, that never made it to the commissioners. Uh, so we've been approached by the sheriff's office to just get an updated version of this resolution in front of them so that they, they have something they can, they can hang their hat on when they're, when they get calls for enforcement out here. Um, the one thing I think we should, we should add to this is that because the town just recently adopted its own noise ordinance, that we would authorize the sheriff's office to enforce that as well, in addition to the county ordinance. Otherwise, this is identical, what was adopted in two thousand and eleven.
So Daniel, in two thousand and eleven, the town had not worked on a noise ordinance of its own.
I, I believe that's the case.
And, uh, so since we do have a noise ordinance of our own now, so the county's ordinance, well, it looks somewhat like the ordinance that we passed is not, is not identical.
Right.
So which one would they be enforcing?
Well, I think that would be whatever is most appropriate, given, given the situation. You know, they, I don't know exactly what the noise ordinance of the county says. Uh, but I know that the towns are slightly different in regards to what qualifies as, as a nuisance. And that's different than what's in the county's ordinance. I believe they use decimals.
And the time and the days are different. And, uh, but right here on, on this, uh, resolution on number two, it says the town of Mills River adopts these ordinances, speaking of the counties, in their entirety as written. So what is it going to be?
Why didn't we write our own if we're going to do theirs?
I mean, we spent a lot of time and effort
Yeah.
writing our own ordinance to sign this and send it to county and say, it, it's in your court.
Right. And that's why I think we should, we should clarify that. That we are authorizing the county to enforce the town's ordinance as well. Because of those differences, that way there would be two different standards that they would have to work from when they're on a site dealing with a complaint.
Is that going to get confusing though? So if the county's ordinance is like midnight, we have a complaint at the brewery and ours is ten and they can say, well, I'm in the county ordinance.
Yeah.
Like that's too gray to me.
I agree. I think it needs to be one of the.
More restrictive of the two.
Yes. I think we should just reference ours.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you know, somebody will make their argument like, well, the county says, I'm good till midnight.
Right.
So on, on number three, is that I have a problem with number three. So if we enter into a contract with the county, they decide to amend their ordinances, then it, then this document automatically says that we agree. Is that the way that I read it?
That's right.
Awesome. Has our attorney seen this document?
No, this was, that was adopted back in, I think it was two thousand and eleven. So we, we just really changed the dates.
It, it was basically identical to the one that we did before. And we've updated, all I did was update the reference to the county ordinances. It is not standard practice to send a resolution to your, um, attorney. Ordinances, yes. Resolutions, no.
Normally, whenever we deal past history, normally whenever we deal with another government agency is that we send our intent to our attorney that our attorney contact the county's attorney, they work it out. And then they send it back to us. Now, as of ten o'clock this morning, our attorney has no recollection of this. Even in twenty eleven. So is that what I would like for this council to review this resolution, send it to our attorney, let her look over it. And if she's fine with it, I'm fine with it. Let her send it to the county attorney. Let them argue back and forth, whatever they do. And then come back to us. Is that, this has been going on since twenty eleven. So another. So another. Ten, fifteen, twenty days ain't gonna matter. Is that, I just want all the i's dotted and the t's crossed.
I have a quick question. It says animal and noise ordinance, and I just want to make sure, are these two separate? Is the animal had to do with animal enforcement ordinances, and noise is a separate? I'm sure noise is separate, but.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to, is it actually two different ordinances?
I believe they are.
Yes. Okay, so. The town does not have an animal ordinance, correct?
Correct.
So we would be adopting the entirety of the animal. I don't know that I've ever seen the animal enforcement, or the animal ordinances for the county, so I would like to see those.
Sheriff's Department enforces that.
Yes, and I, I bet I would like to see this before we actually.
At all, we already have it on.
We don't have an animal.
Not him, yeah, but who knows?
That's what I'm saying, I don't know what it says, so I don't.
Well, I mean, you know, people have, you know, it may be like, no risk, no farm animals in residential neighborhood, and. That's, you find that around here.
In my experience, it's mostly putting down rabid raccoons. Things like that. Um, so Daniel, what is, what is your suggestion here? Um, I, I don't, I mean. We know that we have. A noise problem in Mills River. And this addresses that, this is what we have to kick off, get the ball rolling, to get our noise ordinance enforced, which. I know we passed that noise ordinance, and it's just been sitting there, and it's not being enforced. Councilman Snyder, if I recollect your statement, if we, if we enacted that noise ordinance yesterday, it wouldn't be soon enough. I just don't want to see this drag out too much longer, because. We have a noise ordinance, we've passed it, we've had it sitting in front of the county commissioners for. How many months? I mean, it's been a while.
And we've been dicking around.
I, I, well. To the point where I was going to write a very nasty letter to all five of the commissioners, and just happened. I mentioned it to Daniel that I was gonna do that, and he said, well, wait, because we just got, you know, a request for, for, for this. So I didn't, I didn't end up sending that letter happily, but, uh. I just don't want us to get hung up and never, never. So, Daniel, what's, what's your suggestion on, on how to move forward to this, because. Um, obviously, the, the animal control part of it, the sheriff's deputies are already handling that part of it. Um, but I do agree, you know, our noise ordinance is slightly different, maybe, maybe the language here needs to say. We're adopting. The. The noise, uh, a noise ordinance, which, which mirrors. The Henderson County ordinance with slight modifications, that's what, that's essentially what we did, we passed their, their noise ordinance with. Our modification, so it's, it's a, it is a specialized version of their ordinance. So I, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, I, well, I think it certainly makes sense to put the town's noise ordinance in here instead of the county's. Um, and then I think we'll just get the copy of the animal control ordinance and bring it back, so that we can discuss that, and. When the time is right, and you're ready to adopt the resolution, we can, we can do that.
And also on the number three there, any future amendments to it? Because if there's, if it's a Mills River's noise ordinance, I don't want the county to amend our ordinance. So I'm not comfortable with. Having language in there that, that leaves that avenue open for somebody other than this council.
They wouldn't, the county wouldn't be able to modify the, the town's ordinance, that would be.
If we accept this, the way it's written on number three, we would be agreeing for them to. Amend their ordinance that we, that would affect our ordinance.
If, if we're doing, if we end up doing what we've discussed tonight about. Striking the Henderson County noise ordinance and putting in town Mills River's noise ordinance. Then that's the, that's the ordinance, that can't be changed. Now, if we also. If you also go ahead and adopt the animal control ordinance. Then that's the law of the land, and if they amend that, that could have impacts on Mills River, because it's the county's ordinance. But the noise ordinance can't be changed by the county.
Okay, I'm fine with that, as long as there's a distinction made between the animal and the noise.
Right.
And, and leaving noise out of number three.
Well, what if we did that? I got a suggestion, I'm really gonna mess things up. So why don't we look at the animal? Ordinance. Separate, have two different resolutions. If we like the county's animal ordinance, let's adopt it as our own, and then we're in control of it. And then have them enforce that animal enforcement. Then it's in-house.
Now, is that, on personal experience. The sheriff's department, I'm gonna say. Is that. They would deal. With the animal part. Personal experience. I know this for a fact, because Sally's is at the house. Is that. She was a stray dog. We trapped her. The sheriff's department come and got her. And I had to jump through hoops to get that dog. Now, that's been three or four years ago, but. Is that, we went through this, and Sue, you might remember, with the fire marshal stuff. Is that we got a letter from the state. Saying they, is that we was out of compliance. With gunfire inspections. You remember that? Back in nineteen ten? Okay. But, is that. I can understand the county, I can understand the sheriff's department. Wanting some kind of authorization to come into Mills River. Uh, dealing with dogs, cats, whatever. And I can understand. Them dealing with the noise ordinance. I agree with Brian Kimball, they're two separate issues. And they need to be, as far as the town, two separate issues. Now, is that. Did somebody drop the ball in twenty eleven? I don't know. Is that, it doesn't matter. We're over and done. But is that. If we contract. With, with the county, or Fletcher, or whoever. Someone needs to keep their thumb on that and follow it through. And that way, we're not in this predicament again.
Some direction, we're gonna separate the resolutions.
Separate the resolutions and get a copy of the county's.
All right, any other discussion on that?
I was just gonna say, on the, on the noise ordinance, I think. Since we have to get this past the county commissioners, if we can just. Make sure that they understand that our resolution mirrors theirs with mild modifications. And I think if the language is in there, I think it'll, it'll go, go through with no problem, but, uh, I just don't want there to be any more delays in. Implementing this.
All right, so that takes care of our regular agenda, now we have staff updates. Sue, is there anything additional from you?
I was gonna tell you that the audit was completed, and I've already mentioned that. That's really all I had, just the audit's been completed.
Thank you. Ian Arley, anything from the tax collector?
Just wanted to update you on the twenty twenty one tax billing. Um, excuse me, last year, I believe I had a tax report for you at this meeting, but this year. Um, we haven't had the bills go out yet. The county, well, had software issues. And their IT people finally solved it, and we didn't even get our file till last week, which is almost a month late. So I am hoping that the bills will go out, um, probably the first full week in September. Maybe by the first, if we have a miracle at the printer. But. That's never happened before, so. Uh, we've been working really hard getting the file uploaded, we, we do. Finally have it loaded into our software as of probably nine fifteen tomorrow morning. Uh, but everything's all straightened out with that, so we will have. Um, the, the taxes available to us, but the bills, I don't expect to go out until the first, that first week in September.
Orley, is that. Would you mind updating the council about the discussion about the foreclosures? About the amounts and so forth, please?
What our criteria is?
Yes, is that, is that, did you have a chance to look at other?
I did, um, I didn't get a whole lot of feedback back. Um, but, let's see. So back in, oh, I think it was twenty seventeen. Yes, August tenth, twenty seventeen, um, the council at the time authorized us to begin. Sending foreclosures to a, a. Attorney in Asheville, and the criteria at that time was set at either five years delinquent. Or more than five hundred dollars. So. Roger had asked me to get some feedback on some other towns our size, and just, you know, and. Some, there was a couple of counties that answered me as well, as to what their criteria were. So. There is a county that. Davidson County, Davidson County uses. These factors. The highest outstanding balance. The age of delinquency, how many years it's delinquent, the marketability of the property, how easily it would be to sell. Um, and the balance between commercial and residential properties, so that they don't foreclose on all residential or all commercial. And. The benefit to the neighborhood, um, i- is the property in distress, is it? Falling down, or, you know. Is it, is it a problem for the, the neighborhood? Um, a couple of the cities. Um, they're three to four years delinquent, unless it's a larger, a large bill, um, then it's one year. The state statute says. If the date of, if the due date is January fifth, theoretically, you could foreclose on anything. That was delinquent the next day. So, nobody does that. Fletcher is if it's more than three years. So we've actually, our five years is actually more than, than most.
Can you, without naming names. And pertinent information. Can. Can you explain to the council what, what, what brought all this up? Just, just thirty seconds, please.
A co-owner of a property that we have been. Working with for more than two years. Um, was served with. Foreclosure papers and was not happy.
So, the, the orig- so the original tax bill combined. Was like six hundred dollars, give or take. Well, so, the lawyer fees was what, four thousand? Give or take? So. Is that, I have a little problem with that.
I mean, I know I pay my taxes every year, but I still check and make sure my name's on, on the list, you know? Gotta, and especially if someone else was paying it, I'm, if I'm a co-owner.
There, there were many.
Yeah.
Many attempts to get this paid before it was turned over to the attorney. Every single one of them said, call me and this will stop.
Yeah, but if you put someone in charge that you apparently couldn't trust to pay the bill.
Is that, is that, Orley did a good job. So I sent the people down here. Then I decided, no, I'm not gonna put her in that situation. So I come down here also. Well, is that. What it was, is that Orley. Sent the bills. To the first person on the list, right, Orley?
We send the bills to the address of record.
Right, okay, so Orley sends the bills to the address. But if you have four or five owners of a piece of property. And one, and so whoever gets their original bill just thumbs their nose up. Then the other owners don't know nothing about it. And so that was this person's particular rap. Is it, is it fair?
Yes.
So I think that the council. May want to think about this. Now, I'm not trying to put extra work on Orley, is that she does a good job. But. Is that. This second owner, third owner, whatever it was.
It's like four.
Fourth, fourth owner. He said, if I'd knew about it, I'd have come and paid it. Well, is that.
But do we have records to even? Would you even have the records to go through all the, all the different? You don't, you wouldn't know how to contact him, did? You had the one address, right, so. That's why we pay the attorney.
And, and I would.
The attorneys sent letters too, they would rather have a payment plan set up. Sure.
But in the past. Is that I've sent several people down here to Orley, that Orley has worked with them. Setting up payment plans and so forth. And I don't expect, or, I don't expect the town to go through five owners. You know, try to call them, try to notify them. Is that. The same situation. Is at my house in Forsyth County. That's a whole different story. Ah, thank you, Orley.
What does the county do? Same. Because I think they were also, same, same parcel was also in a regional county, right? They are, yeah. So who gets dibs on that, if there's a foreclosure?
It, it would depend on what it sold for. And of course. The town, we would actually put in a bid for the amount of the taxes. So that somebody, if someone owed three thousand dollars worth of taxes. If we didn't put a bid in of three thousand dollars that somebody had to beat, they could come in and buy it for two thousand dollars, and then we wouldn't get all our taxes paid. So. If, if a property sells, if we put in a bid for, let's say, three thousand dollars, and the county is also owed two thousand. And someone paid us three thousand dollars for it, yeah, the county would be, we'd get ours first.
Some of that's taxpayer responsibility to know if you have, you know you have property out there, you better check, make sure your name's not on the list. Okay, thank you, Arley. Um, zoning administrator, Michael, you have anything else?
Yeah, speaking of text amendments, uh, the June twenty fourth council meeting, we received direction to draft the certificate of understanding. Text amendment, removing that requirement, uh, having owners sign all final plats for subdivisions. From our subdivision ordinance, so just wanted to inform you that's been drafted, it's going before the planning board next week on the seventeenth. And we'll come back to council to set that public hearing on August twenty sixth, and we're gonna target that hearing for October fourteenth. Um, received a minor commercial subdivision for the party property. That should be going before the planning board on September seventh. Uh, and that should kind of wrap up, uh, the final approval for them. Mills River Crossing South and Cottages at Hayes Mill all have about eight to twelve zoning permits each, so there's. Plenty of residential construction going on at both those places. Um, I approved the Fern Clap, Fern Cliff Sun Cap Recombination Plat today, and that would be for the two hundred and fifty. Thousand square foot distribution and warehousing facility at Fern Cliff Park. They now have their final plat and zoning permit, so they should be moving forward with, uh, further development over the next couple of months. Um, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Can you, can you just hit the highlights on the planning board's decisions that are up? Can you can you just hit the highlights on the planning board's decisions that are up, please?
Sure. We had a variance request, variance twenty one oh one. You're talking about the Board of Adjustment? The one before the Board of Adjustment last, sorry, excuse me, Tuesday night. It was a request to vary from the town's front yard setback requirement, which is sixty feet as measured from the front property line. These the property owners of this lot and the farm at Mills River wanted to build their house thirty five feet from the front property line, so a twenty five foot variance. And that was denied by the Board of Adjustment due to lack of proof of hardship. Oh, yeah.
There's an appeal.
Daniel can summarize that.
The other one was the appeal of Mr. Reese for replacement of a food truck and construction of a structure without a permit. And he appealed that decision and it was upheld by the Board of Adjustment.
Does that involve fines?
Yes, civil penalties.
Is it every day?
It was every day until the appeal came in, so it was about two and a half weeks or so roughly fines penalties. Eight hundred and fifty dollars.
All right, and last, Daniel, do you have anything else to report?
Just a couple of the things regarding text amendments. Earlier this year, we were notified by the county that they were no longer going providing watershed and stormwater management reviews for the town. There wasn't there was an agreement between the two entities that expired a few years ago. And it was discovered when the Henderson County Watershed Administrator was going to step out some enforcement actions on someone and working with their attorney, they made that discovery. So we soon got a call from the coordinator at the state level from NC Department of Environmental Quality. And we're working with them to prepare an ordinance. This is not a new regulation per se. It's it's been on the books since the town's been around. It was just administered by the county. It's in the county ordinance says. So the town has to adopt its own watershed ordinance, which will take a couple of meetings to the planning board before before it's wrapped up. And then the the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee for Henderson County, that's made up of Hendersonville and the other municipalities, has had a challenge with this quorum the last couple of months due to various absences. And has asked that each member of that of the committee appoint an alternate. Typically, it's an elected official who represents the town. At that meeting, they suggested that an alternate be a staff member or another councilperson. So that if the appointed member is unable to attend, the alternate can be there so that they can have forum. So I would I would suggest that you you do that. You don't have to do it this evening. You're not meeting again for a little while, then a quarter quarterly. So I just recommend that you if you think about that and make an appointment as you feel necessary or appropriate. Now, the website project is moving along. We met this week with the design team to go over some other websites that we found that we think will be a good fit for Mills River. They've taken that and are working on what's called a mood board, which basically is the colors that they'd wanna use for the site and the images and the town's logo. And how that will all work together. We're meeting next week again to go over some more design questions. The Streamback Restoration Project is moving along. We got bids in a couple of last week it was. The apparent low bidder was just over a hundred and fourteen thousand. So hopefully that will be coming to you later this month. We were we did have a meeting scheduled for the space needs assessment with the architects. However, the day before that was supposed to happen, I found out that I was I was in the room with someone who had COVID. So out of extra caution, I canceled that meeting. I got tested and negative, but need to reschedule that one. Tomorrow afternoon, we're meeting with the consultants for the bike and pedestrian plan. We're going to tour Mills River so they can get a feel of what's what's going on in town. The ARP funding should be should be showing up in the town's account relatively soon. We got notice of that today, I think it was. Yep. Working on getting quotes for the for audio visual updates to this room. We have one in hand. It's for a very top of the line system, a very top of the line price. I'm still waiting on a second quote, which I think will be more a little bit easier to swallow. And the other thing is just because I'm nerdy, the the census data came out today. The twenty twenty census data, it's not yet down to the to the town level, so we can't see what our population is. That comes out in a couple of months. But if you're bored and you wanna go look at the the census website, you can find all kinds of cool data. I think that's all that I have.
Daniel, you mentioned the Atlanta Sky Picnic, that there's a steering committee of some sort that's being set up to, I think region wide, to discuss ways to collaborate on ERP funds. I think I think.
Yes, yes, that was LGCC.
Is that the one I got volunteered for?
Yes.
So I guess more information will be forthcoming.
I heard anything from you, Sue, about?
I think the county was the county agreed to head it up, Commissioners, right? And so they will hopefully disperse information about.
I don't mind.
I'll look into it if I get an update for you.
The most experienced.
For those of you who are not aware of what we're talking about, the the LGC met in July and decided that it would be beneficial for all the local governments in Henderson County to form a group. A working group could decide if there's ways that we can partner with them, make the make the most use of those.
Just so we don't overlap.
Right.
Okay, before we go to.
I got one thing. Can you change the text on the webpage?
Yeah, the building. Under the about section on tax rate, it's listed as nonsense.
Your counsel comment?
That's my counsel comment, it should be eight, not nine.
I've got a couple of things. Sorry. Daniel, the committee assignments and where are we at on that?
We're planning to come back to you on August twenty sixth, more information about that process and some draft. That's the word, yes, there you go, thank you.
But we didn't settle on the number of seats on the planning board last night, right?
Yes.
We did settle on that. And then the part of that motion was to postpone the ordinance amendment until we had those charters. It was proceeded on this up up there, so we're prepared to do that.
And that's the next meeting, right?
We won't have the text amendment available next meeting, but we'll have the policies for the plant for the committees.
We'll have enough information for us to give direction, right?
Yes.
Thank you. And the other thing was I've been approached by, so every day when one of the park was built, there was trees that were dedicated. And I was hoping Nicole would be here because I spoke to her about it. Trees dedicated with signs of who they were dedicated to. So some of the signs are missing, some of the signs have been damaged. So I think the town cared enough at one time to put the plaques on the trees who they were dedicated for, so I think we should keep this up. And Nicole suggested she had been looking at it and she suggested getting this the plaques off the ground and hanging them on the tree themselves to keep the moor from damaging them and everything. So I would like for us to go ahead and talk about that if we have to talk about it, or let's just make it happen. And Nicole had a pretty good plan when I talked to her, so all really all she needs is money.
Yeah.
And she was talking about they were like eighty dollars.
Yeah.
So.
And and that's what we did talk about that. And it's really just a policy decision of the board. I mean, right now, people can apply for a plaque, they pay for it, it gets installed. The the little bit of uncertainty around that was if a bench happens to get damaged that was dedicated or provided by some of the public to replace that can be a little bit costly, but I think we can cross that bridge when we get to a platter, platter whole different level.
I think it's kind of the way we approached the guardrail thing. They were paid for originally. And then it's the town's responsibility to keep this stuff up. So I would like to make a motion that we replace the plaques and anything.
Do you want to make a motion to amend your plaque policy where the town pays for replacements?
I I want to see that anything that the town approves to be dedicated to someone with a plaque that the town make sure we keep it up into the future. If if it's a plaque that is paid for originally by the family or whatever, once it's in our possession, that we keep it up.
Okay.
Form of a motion, Sue, do you get that?
Um, yes, and I think if if Daniel agrees, we should write that up as a policy and bring it back.
For future, but in the meantime, can does that authorize Nicole to start replacement?
Well, it was.
So if we if Sue rewrites the policy to bring us to adopt, in the meantime, can we authorize Nicole to proceed to the placement? Is that what you want in the meantime? Yes, okay. Does that make sense?
If we cared enough to to have a tree planted and a plaque put on it, then we should keep it up.
Sure.
Now, is that? I don't know how to say this, but is that I'm gonna leave it up to Nicole to come up with a certain size? Is that make it make it standard, I guess is the right word? Is that? I don't want Roger to have one this big and Randy to have one this big.
Is that already in the policy?
Yeah, that part's actually already addressed. There was a policy adopted in two thousand and fourteen, standardizing the plaque to be no more than five by eight inches.
So we had a motion, was there a second?
Thank you.
Do you have something on that?
I can it's I can ask.
Later, okay, I was in favor. I. Any opposed?
The plot, yeah, so we have a plaque policy. Is this what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Can you send that to us? Is there anything, my curiosity, is there anything in there that restricts what can be on the plaque or who can be on the plaque?
Okay.
I mean, that's an interesting.
You know, like it only addresses size.
Okay.
Anything that would be dedicated with a plaque in the town park would be approved by this council, right?
That's up to you. Right now, it's there's an application.
Is that worse to getting that, Brian?
I'm just getting it in today's times, there's things that can be controversial. And so it's better, in my opinion, to have policy in place so that it's not a judgment call on anybody's behalf.
So we don't want Karl Marx having a plaque in our.
Sorry to make things more complicated.
Surely somebody already has that in a policy we can steal.
So we wanna modify the existing policy that that something to the effect of the plaques have to be approved by town council? Is that what we're doing or?
I would prefer there to be some standards. Then that way it's not a judgment call that someone can.
Well, no one has to approve or disprove one if it's if we have standards and it's outside of our standard, we're not disproving it, it just didn't fit.
Right.
We're not picking on you, Mr. Whoever, it just doesn't fit in our standard.
Personally, I'm fine is that if we is that if we got standards, Nicole making the call. And if the if the family insists, then we will make the call. But but I'm perfectly fine with Nicole. I guess being in charge of this, is that the right word?
Yes.
All right, other council comments?
Let me just just for your, so you know. And we passed this, we'll send this to you while he was making a note. I was just gonna read you what it says. Mills River Town Council does hereby set a policy to standardize any plaque that is proposed to be placed in Mills River Park. The plaque could could be no larger than five by eight and would need to be, I'm sorry, that's inches, would need to be constructed of metal. Any placement of a plaque and specific material would require the approval of the park director. The town would also require the plaque be maintained or be subject to removal. So we would have to, that's why we have to amend the park, the plaque policy, because right now it's up to the individual to maintain it.
And we will certainly draft that. I will need to involve your attorney in that. There's always the First Amendment free speech, we need to be careful of, so we'll we'll start working with her on that.
Other counts.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina Journal Statute one forty three dash three one eight dot one one eight to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of employment of an individual.
I will second.
I was in favor.
All right.
All right, so we'll.